Good evening and welcome to the June 19 City Council Housing Authority, Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Natural Gas Financing Authority Meeting. I'm going to ask the City Attorney to provide the closed session report.
Good evening. Tonight, the City Council met with the City Attorney's Office in closed session to discuss one potential litigation matter pursuant to government code section 54956.9. They were provided a report and gave direction to staff. I have no further reportable action on the matter. Please let the record reflect that the meeting was adjourned at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Very much. I'll ask the City Clerk to call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Madonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like Troop 11 to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Two. Thank you.
You get a roll call and why, tell us why you're here this evening.
We're all working on our communication merit badge and one of the requirements was to come to a City Council meeting and basically observe and listen to what everyone has to say.
Right. Councilmember Madonza is an Eagle Scout, so.
Communications, huh? You can knock off your citizenship in the community probably, too.
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
I'm going to ask the City Clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville's regular City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to staff members or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For comments on non-agenda items, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda. Public comments on these items will, on non-agenda items, will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for a public comment is 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not have the opportunity to speak in this first segment will have an opportunity at the end of the council meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from taking action, debating, or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For comments that are listed on the agenda, the speaker will have five minutes to provide input and the comments should be related to the item appearing on the agenda. Time will be monitored and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we ask the speaker to please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville and thank you for your civic participation tonight.
Good evening. I mean, thank you. We're going to start this evening with presentations. We're going to have the annual Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. It's nice to see you all. I am here to give you our annual update on behalf of the Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District. My name is Megan Lavano. I'm the Public Information Officer there. I do have a presentation. Can you guys see that? Okay. Okay, awesome. Perfect. So I always like to go over a little bit about us since it's a year every time that I see you. We are a special district located in Roseville. Our mission is to effectively and efficiently manage the risks from vectors and vector borne disease in order to protect public health and quality of life in Blasor County. Like I said, we're a special district. We're governed by California mosquito and vector control law. We have a seven-member Board of Trustees. Each member represents the different cities and the town of Loomis and one representative at large represents Placer County. One of our trustees, Ross Hutchings, is here with me tonight and he represents Roseville and is currently the Chair on our board. We also have 25 full-time staff members and we hire seasonal employees and interns in the summer months. We're currently hiring two seasonal employees. We need a little bit of help this summer and I'll get into why in a little bit. Let me go to the next slide. We serve all of Placer County from the west Placer side all the way up to the Tahoe Basin. Each area of the county deals with different vectors and vector borne diseases. Here in Roseville and on the west side, we're dealing with mosquitoes and West Nile virus. In mid-placer, we're still dealing with mosquitoes but also ticks and Lyme disease. And then up in the east side of the county, we're dealing with yellow jackets, still mosquitoes unfortunately. And then also, we assist the California Department of Public Health with rodent borne disease issues. So, a little bit more about the different programs that we have. We follow an integrated vector management approach and within that approach, we have different programs. So, we have vector and disease surveillance, if we want to skip to the next slide. Thank you. We have a chemical control program, biological and physical control like our mosquito fish program. We do community and school outreach. We have a technology and innovation program. Just this year, we held a demonstration in Roseville of how we use our drone to treat larval mosquito sources. Our drone program has come a very long way and it's something we're super proud of, but we're actually able to use a drone now to access areas that we can't access very well by foot to reach mosquito sources and treat them from a drone. And then we have an applied research program where we're always trying to make the tools that we have more effective and more efficient. Next slide. This is a graph of the public service requests we received in May. We have a system where anyone in Placer County can submit a problem report for issues like mosquitoes, standing water, ticks, yellow jackets, and dead birds. And basically, those requests get sent out to technicians who oversee different zones that make up our entire county and we'll go out and meet with the resident, do a property inspection, and try to respond to the issue they're having as best as we can. In May, we had a lot of standing water requests which are for mosquito fish. That's probably our most popular problem report that we get and then also mosquito activity. So, again, if people are interested in reporting any issues, they could go onto our website, plastermosquito.org backslash report and submit a problem. Our mosquito fish program, like I mentioned, is one of our most popular programs that we have. People in the public throughout the entire county can submit their addresses and the standing water source that they have, whether it's a pond or a water trough, and our technicians will come out, make sure that that water, the water source that they have is a good fit for mosquito fish and they'll place mosquito fish in their ponds or water troughs. And those mosquito fish will actually eat mosquito larvae off the tops of the water. So it's super effective in the spring months before it gets super hot and adult mosquitoes are flying around for mosquito control on their properties. So we get, like I mentioned, quite a few requests in the spring for mosquito fish every year. So, West Nile virus. West Nile virus is the only mosquito borne disease that we have here in Placer County right now. We usually detect West Nile in a mosquito sample or a dead bird in late June, early July. Last year, that was detected on June 21st. We are right there and as of like 3 o'clock today, our testing of dead birds and mosquitoes came negative for West Nile. So we still have not detected West Nile in Roseville yet. Last year, the location where we detected it was in west Roseville. Our 2023 detections, we had one human death of West Nile in Placer County last year. There were six human cases. We had 44 dead birds test positive and then 177 mosquito samples. We also detected St. Louis encephalitis virus for the first time last year since 2017. It was unusual, but we had a very wet spring, if you remember, and then a really warm summer and that could be contributor, a contributor to why we found St. Louis encephalitis last year. For California, as of earlier this week, there's been 31 positive dead birds throughout the entire state and 111 mosquito samples testing positive for West Nile throughout the state. The Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District has already detected West Nile in their birds and in some mosquito samples near Land Park. So we feel that we're probably close behind for our initial detection, just as of today. That hasn't happened. That, we can move on to the next slide. So, we will keep the community informed as much as we can as soon as we get that first West Nile virus positive in the county. Another issue we're dealing with this summer are invasive eighties mosquitoes. We found them for the first time in Roseville in 2019 and we've been, we've been finding them in different Roseville neighborhoods pretty much since then. Invasive eighties mosquitoes are a different species of mosquitoes than the West Nile virus spreading mosquitoes. They are not native to California. They've been spreading throughout the state since 2013 and they have the ability to spread diseases like Zika, dengue, chicken guinea, and yellow fever, although we do not have those diseases circulating in the county. With the introduction of these mosquitoes, now we have risk of having a situation like that. And last year, in Long Beach and in Pasadena, there were two cases of locally transmitted dengue. So, these mosquitoes are extremely aggressive day biters. They're black and white and they're very tiny and they need tiny amounts of water to develop. So, we're talking about water that's in your sprinkler head. That's all they need to really develop on someone's property. So as of May 31st, we found them in the foothills junction neighborhood. That's like junction behind the Jack in the Box over here, not far from where we are in Roseville. And then on June 5th, we found them in the Parker Whitney neighborhood of Rockland, which is close to the Johnson Spring View Park. These have been our only detection so far and we're kind of getting our arms around how big the infestation is. So if we go to the next page, this is a look at the detection site. So, on the right-hand side, that yellow graph is where we're finding these mosquitoes currently in the foothill junction neighborhood and we're continuing to find some of the mosquitoes towards the left-hand side in the Wood Creek Oaks neighborhood. So our technicians are going out, they're doing door-to-door inspections and they're trying to find locations and properties really where they could be contributing to the development of these mosquitoes. And so, we're going into backyards, we're looking in front yards, we're trying to find where they might be developing and treating those sites as needed. On the left-hand side, sorry, go back, thank you, the two yellow boxes are showing the detections from this year and the orange is showing our detections from last year. So as you can see, there's a good chance that these mosquitoes might be spread throughout this area. They're very hard to find. Their larvae is hard to find because it's so tiny and they're also hard to control because they develop in these cryptic water sources. So we actually have a treatment planned for this neighborhood in Roseville on Friday morning and it's both a larvicide and adulticide treatment. So we're trying to access both life stages of these mosquitoes to try to keep our community safe. The next slide is just a little bit about our response plan, but basically, we're doing enhanced surveillance, setting out more traps and trying to expand our border to see where these mosquitoes might be spreading to. We're doing door-to-door inspections, looking in properties, in their backyards and front yards to see if there's maybe a, you know, a site that's really the developing site of these mosquitoes. We are trapping mosquitoes and bringing them back to identify species and how many we're finding and then we're making treatments and always going back and assessing and planning for what's next to try to knock these mosquitoes down. Really important for everyone on council and then everyone in the audience is how to protect yourself from mosquitoes this summer. Getting rid of standing water, especially with invasive eighties mosquitoes, is your most important step you want to take. When it comes to West Nile virus spreading mosquitoes, you want to use EPA-registered repellent. That's going to be your most important step to take. And not every repellent is the same. We're talking about repellents that have ingredients like DEET, picaridin, and IR-3535. Those are going to do the best at preventing mosquito bites. And then, making sure screens on doors and windows are in good condition and for any questions or concerns, call our district because we're here to help and be a resource to our community. And there's more information on our website, plastermosquito.org backslash prevent. A few last things. Like I mentioned, reporting dead birds is a way that we can find if there's West Nile virus spreading in our community. So right now, we're in that really crucial time when we're asking the community to, to actually report dead birds because that could give us that first indication that we have West Nile virus spreading and people can start taking precautions. So, if you do find a dead bird, you could report it through the online reporting system, westnile.ca.gov. It's a statewide program and that helps the state better monitor where we're finding West Nile virus out the entire state or by calling the number listed above. Using gloves to carefully place the bird in a plastic bag is important, putting it in a shady area so that someone from our district can come pick it up. So again, report dead birds at westnile.ca.gov. All right, last slide and totally off the mosquitoes. Everyone's been asking, what is going on with these grasshoppers in west Placer, Roseville, and Lincoln? So, just like the city of Roseville, we have been receiving an increase in calls starting back on Friday, May 31st, the same day we found invasive eighties in Roseville about grasshoppers. And so basically, we saw an influx in calls and then we got in touch with a few of our partners like the Placer County Agriculture Commissioner, the UC Urban and Community Integrated Pest Management Area Advisor, the UC Master Gardeners. We were talking to Roseville's PIO, Lincoln's PIO, trying to figure out what is going on and what information can we share with the community. And so, long story short, we have been finding short-horned, melanoplasis grasshoppers in the western part of Placer County, not just Roseville. It's also been, they're being found in Lincoln and then other parts of west Placer. They come and they kind of take over yards every five to 10 years. And I was just talking with our trustee Ross about some of these homes haven't been built when the last time these grasshoppers were extremely busy and over in the west side of the county. They prefer green plants, they like lettuce, beans, corns, carrots, and they will wipe out entire yards. The bad news is there's not much we can do. There is not a control method for these grasshoppers and from a vector control standpoint, we don't know anything about grasshoppers and how to control them. So with our partners, we've been sending out information of what's going on and how to report these issues to the Placer County Master Gardeners who actually track pest issues in the area. So, long story short, this happens every five to 10 years. It is an invasion of grasshoppers. They're not spreading any sort of disease, but there's not much we can do and if you have an issue with them, reporting to the Placer County Master Gardeners is your best bet. So I know that's not the answer most people want to hear. My last slide is just how to sign up for our emails. This is really important. We send out treatment notifications of where we're doing treatments as soon as we can after a decision has been made. And then also, district news updates which will give you information about what's going on when it comes to mosquitoes, ticks, and yellow jackets throughout the county. If you go to our website, it's the blue button at the top. The red and the yellow are for West Nile and invasive eighties information, which is very important to the community here in Roseville. So that's all for me today. I'm open to taking some questions unless they're about grasshoppers. Just kidding.
Counsel, any questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Megan, you do an incredible job as a Public Information Officer. I imagine that you are wonderful at a cocktail party, talking about all the mosquitoes. Question, standing water. Would, would a creek that's been dammed consider, be standing water and how do you treat those?
Yes, and if the community finds a creek that's been dammed up by beavers or whatever might be causing the dam, they can still submit a problem report for that area and our technicians will go out and sometimes try to get rid of the dam, but also go and try to make a treatment to help with that issue.
Okay.
A lot of times, clearing the dam is going to be what's going to help that water continue to flow and, and not have mosquitoes in it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great job tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
I was just going to mention something. I had the opportunity to see your drones in action in Roseville and that was very good.
Thank you.
You can really see how it saved time and, and it was time and manpower so that your people could actually talk to real people and, and discuss things, not try to go through the jungles of, you know, of rushes and so.
Yes.
It was, it was good. I didn't realize how, you know, how much you're using it. It was very effective.
Thank you and thank you for coming and we're, we're really proud of our drone program and now I think just this week, our district manager is giving a presentation on drones and mosquito control for the American Mosquito Control Association and how we're using it here in Roseville and in the county. So, yeah, thank you.
So Vice Mayor Bernisconi talked about, you know, a dammed up area. I think of swimming pools, the standing water.
Yes.
But how small? I mean, is it, you know, standing water, what's the scale?
Yeah, like I said, with invasive eighties, they need cryptic water sources to develop.
I'm sorry, cryptic?
Cryptic. So we're talking about water sources that are extremely hard to locate. There's been one report of a water pot that was once filled with water, drained, and the eggs were on the side of the pot. It refilled and those eggs were somehow able to develop. So it's a little bit concerning with invasive eighties of having any standing water on your property. In some cases, we're asking people to actually scrub out pots to make sure that the eggs are, are gone. When it comes to green swimming pools, those are also a public health concern. We get a lot of green pool requests from neighbors reporting their other neighbors. We want those reports because we want to go in and treat those pools as much as we can.
Councilmember Albert.
It seems like we've had less mosquitoes this year and I wonder what causes, you know, sometimes we've had infestations that just drove everybody nuts and sometimes it's not bad at all. Is that because we're reporting well? Is that because Ross is now chairing there and representing Roseville or?
It's really hard to say. He was just mentioning that he's seen less mosquitoes and, you know, our traps are showing pretty average amounts to what we've seen in past years. This year, in January and February, we got the most reports of mosquitoes during those three hot days. I don't know if anyone remembers, the end of January, early February, from all of the west side of Roseville. The species of mosquitoes, we have over 30 species in Placer County that became active were basically hibernating. We had three warm days, they thought it was spring, they came out and our phones were ringing off the hook. The most, the most calls we've gotten in a single day are, is about 20. We had 111 calls from our community about these mosquitoes. So, we were preparing for a much busier summer season of reports from the public and that's not what we've experienced so far. It's really hard to say. Last year, we had an extremely wet spring and we had a lot of mosquitoes. This year, more mild, still had a lot of water, but so far, we've seen less mosquito activity in terms of reports from the public.
Last question.
Yes.
Do you get your degree in environmental science or communications?
Communications. And I just finished my master's program in public policy and administration.
Well, and to, and the reason why I ask that is because your knowledge, and I agree with Vice Mayor Bernisconi, your knowledge and your ability to pronounce some very challenging, you know, Greek and Latin names. You do it effortlessly as if you were, I think, entomologist or one of those science, sciences that study bugs. So, those in Troop 11 in the back may want to have a private session on communication with Megan. She did a fabulous job. Unless there's anything else, unless there's, should we take any public comment on this? I don't think so. I think the public will call you if they have any comments, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks very much. All right, next, we will go to public comment and this is our time in the evening when we have public comment on non-agenda items. So, anyone have any comment on non-agenda items?
Muriel Moore, Roseville resident and Roseville city employee, too. Okay. Can you, can you hear me? Yeah, okay, okay. Last council meeting, that was on the 5th. I spoke to the councilman regarding a tree, I am a school crossing guard, by the way, for, for you and for the audience. I spoke to the councilman regarding a tree and a bush that was obstructing the driving and the pedestrian crossing, especially of my, of my kids at Junction and Stonecrest and that's in District 5, west Roseville. And at that same meeting, I had the chance, and I do want to thank her for meeting the Parks and Rec director with meeting with me because the very next day, it was taken care of. Unfortunately, well, maybe fortunately, too, it was the day after school let out, but so, so that's, that's okay. But that brings me to why I, because I had made three calls to Parks and Recs during the month of May. I did state that last month, I mean, last council meeting and nothing was done and they all know me, so when I call, so maybe they look at it and say, I don't even got to answer that. But nothing was done. But, but it was taken care of. So that leads me to why I'm here to talk about this time, the council, because it was because of that, that it was the last straw. I had, two days prior, entered my papers because that seat for District 5 is up for election, reelection this, this coming November. I entered my papers because, to make sure that things get done and it was at that same meeting, get done by the city, which should be done for all of us, two days before I had filed my papers to run. There are currently about six people running. There are three districts that are up for reelection, for people being elected to that seat, okay? However, at the conclusion of the meeting, I was approached, is probably the better word, by both the council person that is, whose seat is being vacated and his wife, who is also a, a person that is vying for that seat. And it started in the chambers, the conversation, and eventually moved to outside. So I'm talking.
Muriel, I just want to, I just want to make sure, you know, we have a consent item on the election, so I want to make sure your comments are on, and we'll pause that clock for a second. I just want to make sure your comments are on non-agenda items?
It's on a non-agenda item. Absolutely.
Okay, there's an item about the November elections, item 7.23 on consent, so just want to make sure we don't, I got a, I got a city attorney over there that's going to get on me if I don't follow proper procedures.
Okay, do, do we start the clock back? Thank you for, Bruce, okay. I'm here to talk about, okay, the part of the person, the councilperson approaching me, taking it outside and things were said, which I'm talking about ethics. Do we have ethics about why am I running? Why, they're polling at 68%. I won't win. This is highly inappropriate, highly inappropriate. So that's why I'm here. So if you don't have ethics about it, then maybe we should get ethics about it because there are five, six other people that are running for that. Why? And I can understand people getting upset. So that's my, that's my comment on that. The other part was, this is Juneteenth and thank you very much, Roseville, for not recognizing Juneteenth Day. All of you are aware of. All of you were aware of that, okay? You got the announcement for it. And I just want to say that is shameful, because your sister city, Rockland, the county is closed for today. And last year, you were closed for Juneteenth. You honored that day. You did not do it today, and I don't know why. All I can say is, this is what hypocrisy looks like. Thank you. I am through.
Others who have comments on non-agenda items? All right, CNN will go to the consent calendar, and I'll request the city clerk announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On consent calendar tonight, we do have items 7.1 through 7.37. At this time, all matters on consent are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull an item?
Well, I thought I had the item on Baseline Road, request the item on Baseline Road, the traffic signals to be pulled.
If you did, Mayor, I missed that. We can certainly pull it now.
Okay, what item?
What number is that?
Number is it, Bruce?
It's not 723, but it's close to that.
36.
I'm sorry. What number?
36.
736.
So item 7.36 will be pulled for further discussion. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for discussion tonight? Okay, Mr. Mayor, with that, the city council will consider consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.35 and item 7.37. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to 7.36.
Let's, before we move that one, let's see what the nature of the question is, and I'll know if myself, or Dennis, or Jason, or Mike Isom would be the best person to respond.
Yeah, so the nature of the question, this is 7.36 Baseline Traffic Signal Project Interfund Loan. And we have a conversation going on right now about the South Placer, South Sutter traffic mitigation fee. And I wanted to understand where this component part fit in that. I think that's the Mike Isom question, is... I'm sorry, city manager?
Yeah, sure, I can take that one. And so this is a project that you're correct, Mayor, that we'd worked with a Placer County Transportation Agency, Placer County, the city of Roseville, and Sutter, in order to advance two traffic signals to replace stoplights, which is a part of that overall project. Now, the fee program that you're talking about is something that we're working on, right? And the fee program, as far as moving forward, depending on what Sutter ends up doing, Placer County and Roseville largely have our fees set, and we have our fee program set, Sutter does not. But we need Sutter, moving forward, to have a fee program in order to not create a bottleneck down Baseline to where we're able to widen Baseline Road all through Roseville and Placer County, but not through Sutter County. And so that's part of the fee program. This is, unless I'm incorrect and read the item wrong, it has to do with the lights that we're putting in.
Correct. And those lights are within the city of Roseville, not lights that replace the stop signs further down Baseline where you go?
They are not all in the city of Roseville. You want to go up there, Mike? The last I recall, it was one in, one out, but we'll... Our Development Services Director, Mike Isom.
Good evening. Those lights are in Sutter County, and they're not related to the fee program that's being discussed. They are an interim measure to help traffic on Baseline Road move more efficiently until such time as Placer Parkway is developed, 30 or 40 years from now, but the two are not related.
The presentation we saw this morning at the Building Industry by Placer County Transportation Planning Agency included those traffic signals or did not include those?
Not, that fee does not. Those signals are already included in the city-county fee, the traffic fee that's already in place.
Okay. All right, that was the nature of my question.
Okay.
I apologize, Mayor. I do recall you wanting the item pulled. My mistake.
There's a lot of confusion and a lot of, between the city-county fee and fees that we are already paid in the city of Roseville by builders, commercial, and industrial, so I just wanted to get that. So we open it for public comment? Any public comment on this? All right. Do we need a separate motion on this one?
Yes. So the motion on the floor will be that the city council will consider approving an interfund loan of $3,600,000 from the Strategic Improvement Fund, SIF, to the City-County Mitigation Fund to construct the Baseline Traffic Signal Project. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes, thanks very much.
Mr. Casey. All right, we'll go to, make sure I'm in the right place, special requests. First item is council discretionary funds. Fourth of July is coming. Crime Stoppers has a run. They've requested $2,000. I'm sorry, Helen's going to make this... Oh, you're going to make this presentation.
We just made it.
I just made it. Sorry.
Moving along.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. Yes, once again, this is the council discretionary fund item. Crime Stoppers has made a request of $2,000 for the upcoming Fourth of July fun run. They have had this event in the city for several years now, and they are once again just asking for support and sponsorship.
Any questions from the council? All right, open it for public comment. I'll close public comment. I know I got an email that Crime Stoppers couldn't be here tonight, but this is an event that's gone on for at least eight or nine years, so what's the council's pleasure?
Can I ask, or make a comment? Would this, I'm supportive of this, we've done it in the past, but would this be appropriate to ask them, that maybe come through our grants commission, asking for this in the future?
Yeah, I don't know, right? I mean, does the Grants Advisory Commission go that low? And I thought they do? Okay. Yeah, I mean, they could do that, certainly.
I would encourage them to give it a shot, and then, but I'm supportive of it.
I'm going to thank them for being ahead. Sometimes we get these requests after the event, so I'm glad.
I think it brings incredible value to our city, and I'm fully supportive of it.
I support the full amount as well.
I do, too.
All right, sounds like somebody's going to make a motion.
At this time, city council on item 8.1 will consider approving the request for a donation in the amount of $2,000 from council discretionary funds for the Roseville Crime Stoppers Annual Fourth of July Fun Run. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Did I get to vote on that one?
I'm sorry, Mayor Haldishel. I'm sorry. I just assumed, you know, you did the presentation. I figured I'd vote for you.
Thank you. All right, you want to...
Sorry about that.
Here, why don't you do the next presentation?
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is also council discretionary funds. We have the Roseville Girls Softball, and more specifically, Thunder Select Team here tonight. They have made a request for $5,000 to support the traveling team and their activities as they represent the city of Roseville. With that, Mr. Mayor, I know that they're in the crowd. I'm not sure that, you know, this is again, a $5,000 request from council discretionary funds.
So Carmen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I see here in the memo that our discretionary funds currently sit 7,821, so that was before the prior 2,000, so we're 5,821 before we consider this?
Yes, that's correct. We are now at 5,821 is our current balance.
We get refilled next month?
Yes, assuming we adopt the budget.
Right.
All right, are there any questions from the council on this request?
Perhaps maybe 2,500?
2,500, yeah. Okay. I know we have a number of people in the audience. Coach, you want to come up under... We're going to open up for public comment. You want to tell us what's going on and maybe talk about your fundraising efforts?
Hello. Yeah, we are right now...
Could you state your name for the record?
Sorry.
If you're comfortable.
My name is Kevin Alberts. I'm one of the coaches on the Thunder Select Team. We are trying to make Western Nationals in July. In years past, Roseville has had the honor of hosting it. This year, Seattle, Washington is that place. That travel is going to be expensive. We have done some fundraising, though. We hosted a tournament three, four weeks ago, and we were able to raise about $2,200 just from the snack bar. It helps when you're like the only food item. Yeah, so we have our team right here, and these girls are trying to give their all to represent Roseville in this tournament.
Is it all for travel?
It is, yep. It's through the Roseville Girls Softball Organization, though, which started as a recreational league. This is their travel version of that league, so.
Do you have other fundraising events coming up?
I believe we do. We are going to continue efforts right up to it, and even if we don't qualify for Western Nationals, there are still our other tournaments that we can fundraise for, so we're going to go forward with that effort.
Any other comments you'd like the council to consider before we consider?
We just thank you for your consideration on this matter. Each one of these girls can attest to the hours of practice that they've put in up to this point. Their parents can attest to the money that they have spent to have them in this organization, the transportation that they are providing for each one of these girls as well. So we thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, I'll close public comment, bring back the council and ask what the council's desire is.
Just a couple of things that I want to share. We've never, from the 25,000 maybe that we get a year, anything that we don't allocate towards the community rolls over. We've never entered a year with zero balance or almost nothing. We've always had the benefit of rolling over, I think, probably 10,000 at least a year. I am completely supportive of kids and playing sports. I have kids, and I know that travel is really expensive. I also just want for us to caution us that there are lots of travel teams in Roseville competitively, and if we were to give to all of them, we would not be able to have enough funds to sustain the little kind of discretionary funds that we have. So we have, in the past, sponsored adult teams when they come to Roseville and also bring value to Roseville with hotel rooms and things like that. And not to say that this doesn't bring value to us, but I just want for us to be mindful of that, that there are a lot of travel competitive sports teams that would like to have this funding, too.
All right, other comments? I'll just make a comment, then. Mr. Alberts, and the reason why I asked him about the fundraising is because I was sensitive to the fact that that was a big request, and it was the end of the year, and exactly what you said, Vice Mayor Berniscony. And I'd hoped that this would appear as a $2,500 request, which is what Mr. Alberts and I kind of came to. So I would be, I would hope that the council and I'd ask for the council, since I can't make a motion, I'd ask the council to consider supporting this at 2,500. That leaves us 2,500 to roll over to the next year.
Okay, 2,500, I've heard that twice. Anyone else want to provide a different amount?
I can, I think 2,500 is fair.
Girls, are you going to win this thing? I'll support it.
It's contingent on you winning. We'll ask for it back if you don't.
Can we get legal advice on that? Okay.
So you want me to make a motion? Right? Okay, thank you. On item 8.2, the city council will consider approving the request for a donation in the amount of $2,500 from council discretionary funds for the Roseville Girls Softball Thunder Select Team. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with our second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go get them, all right?
Yeah. Good luck. There you go.
One of the members of the team is, might have a hard, might have a big scissors for ribbon cutting, right? So we'll look forward to the victory parade when you come back, all right? If we roll now to appointments for boards and commissions and biannual vacancies, and Helen Dreyer will make the presentation.
Let them know that they're not hostage to listen to me.
Yes. It's okay. Your exit now is the time.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Good luck.
And I got to tell you, you know, I think of Thunder, I think of Rockland, so I don't know what's going on here. I think they're going to listen to you outside in the hall, so.
Mayor Haldishel and city council members, I am Helen Dreyer, your Assistant City Clerk. And as of July 1st of this coming month, there will be vacancies on the city's Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Grants Advisory Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Public Utilities Commission. As part of our biannual vacancy process, we're asking in item 9.1 for council to appoint individuals that have applied for these vacancies. On the Economic Development Advisory Committee, we're asking council to appoint two members. We received applications from Lauren Rosano, Andrew Tagg, and Angela Sujikey. And on the agenda, it did notate that it was for a four-year term, but it's actually a two-year term for Economic Development Advisory Committee. On the Grants Advisory Commission, we're asking you to appoint one individual. We received two applications, one from Melina Maissiro and Laura Rosano, and that is for a four-year term. And on the Planning Commission, we're asking you to appoint two individuals. We received applications from Bruce Hagler, John Pryor, Barbara Samirati, and Kim Ryan Unidad, and that is also for a four-year term. On the Public Utilities Commission, I don't have a slide for that. We only had one vacancy, and we only had one application, so the recommendation will be to appoint Bruce Hagler, I mean, I'm sorry, Einer Maisch to the commission. So with that, the recommendation is for you to fill the vacancies, appointing two individuals to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, one individual to the Grants Advisory Commission, two individuals to the Planning Commission, and to appoint Einer Maisch to the Public Utilities Commission. And I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions for council? Before we vote, we're going to open for public comment. All right, we'll close public comment, and we'll proceed to the vote.
Which one would you like us to go first with?
Economic development. The green one. Thank you. Councilmember Rakucci has voted for Andrew Tagg and Angela Su... I'm hoping I don't sabotage his name.
Sujikey.
Sujikey. Thank you. You may need to repeat that a couple times. Thank you. Councilmember Maldonza has voted for Andrew Tagg and Angela Sujikey. Thank you. Councilmember Albert has voted for Andrew Tagg and Angela Sujikey. And Mayor Haldishel has also voted for Andrew Tagg and Angela Sujikey.
And the Vice Mayor, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Berniscony has voted equally for Andrew Tagg and Angela Sujikey. Okay. Next, we will do the Grant Advisory Commission.
These are monopoly colors, by the way, aren't they?
I was thinking that, too. Missing the blue.
Is this Mount Vernon and all that?
Yeah.
No, yellows on Marvin's Gardens.
Marvin's Gardens. Mount Vernon, Marvin's Gardens.
And just for the record, the record will reflect that both Andrew Tagg and Angela Sujikey received five votes. Okay, and we'll start our voting here for the Grants Advisory Commission. Councilmember Rakucci has voted for Lauren Rosano. Uh, councilmember Mendoza has voted for Lauren Rosano. Councilmember Albert has voted for Lauren Rosano. Mayor Haldishell has voted for Lauren Rosano, and Council, Vice Mayor Berniscony has voted for Lauren Rosano. That makes five votes for Lauren Rosano. Next, we will do our Planning Commission.
Let's see if this goes the same way.
Thank you.
Gary, I'm thinking two for two.
Okay. Uh, for the Planning Commission, the council has an opportunity to appoint two members. Uh, we'll start off with uh, councilmember Mendoza, who has voted for John Pryor and Barbara Samirati. Councilmember Rakucci has voted for John Pryor and Kim Ryan Unidad. Mayor Haldishell has voted for John Pryor and Kim Ryan Unidad. Councilmember Scott Albert has voted for John Pryor and Kim Ryan Unidad. And um, Vice Mayor Berniscony has voted for Bruce Hagler and John Pryor. Helen, would you please read out the votes?
So, that would be five votes for John Pryor and three votes for Kim Ryan Unidad.
Okay, those are the two highest vote-getters for the Planning Commission. Um, with that, Mr. Mayor, if I can do the motion. Sure, on item 9.1, the city council has voted and will consider appointing Andrew Tagg and Angela Sukeygi uh, to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. The city council will also consider appointing Lauren Rosano for the Grants Advisory Commission. City council will also consider appointing John Pryor and Kim Ryan Unidad for the Planning Commission, as well as appoint Einer My, Meisch, thank you, to the Public Utilities Commission. And with that, if I could please have a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert, councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you, Helen.
All right, congratulations, and thank you. Uh, and we all thank all the applicants, uh, each and every time that they submit uh, provide uh, their volunteer efforts to the city, so. Next resolution, 10.1, Electric Residential Customer Program. This is so interestingly worded, Bring Your Own Thermostat Agreement. May I have your presentation?
I believe we have a presentation queued up. And maybe not.
Yeah, it'll come.
Do we want it to happen?
No, our windows are open.
Here we go. Well, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Andrea Blumquist, a Senior Energy Services Account Representative with the electric utility, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about our demand response program, or as you stated, Bring Your Own Thermostat Agreement. Um, demand response programs, um, we've recently done research in methods in a way to increase our electrical grid reliability during grid emergencies for our community. Out of that research, smart thermostat residential demand response programs were found to be the most efficient way for us to balance both supply and demand and stabilize the grid when energy demand surges. Um, a demand response program is a great way for a utility to be able to balance both need and residential electric usage. Um, we are looking to utilize a recently completed agreement between a publicly-owned utility and Energy Hub, which is a national demand response provider. Um, our utility itself are looking to partner with Energy Hub um, for a Bring Your Own Thermostat program, which we are calling PowerFlex. We're looking at a five-year contract for technology designed to provide the electric utility with the ability to temporarily adjust participating customers' smart thermostats, which decreases the amount of energy strain on our electrical grid. Uh, PowerFlex is replacing an existing program, Power Partners, which we've had in existence since 2007, and the PowerFlex program itself will update technology and improve our utility's ability to reduce grid strain while continuing to provide reliable power to our customers. PowerFlex, we are looking to uh, launch a pilot program later this year. Um, it's a voluntary program offered to our residential customers exclusively. Customers must have a smart thermostat installed in their home, and the signup process happens directly through said thermostat. Customers will receive both a signup incentive and an annual incentive for their participation in the program, and we, they will have the ability to opt out of a thermostat adjustment event should they so choose to. How a demand response program works is basically five steps from a customer perspective. The first step being that the energy user will sign up to voluntarily reduce their usage um, in times of extreme demand. Um, the second step would be the energy demand surges, for example, in times of extreme weather. Here in Roseville, that's typically a heat-related event. Um, step three, our participants would then see their thermostat adjusted by the electric utility to reduce energy consumption across the grid. And step four, uh, the reduced demand will help us balance both supply and demand and stabilize our grid. And lastly, those participants who voluntarily participate in this program will receive an incentive for their, their participation. We are asking council tonight to authorize the city manager or its designated to execute a five-year professional services agreement with Energy Hub Incorporated for us to be able to launch this new program. Are there any questions I might be able to answer?
Yeah, council, questions? Council, will I recruit, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor?
Or get Krista, she was, you go ahead.
Okay, two questions. Um, it says it provides incentives, is that money off your bill, or how does that work?
It's a monetary incentive, that it shows up as a monetary credit slash payment on your utility bill. So, at signup, it's a $25 incentive, and then annually, for your participation, there's a reoccurring $25 incentive.
Okay, I thought maybe it was when, when it actually took out, you know, used your...
Right, yes, it's not related to the events themselves, just their willingness to participate, regardless of the events and the quantity of events that may happen.
Okay, and, and my other question is, if they, if they participate and then change their mind, can you change your mind and opt out?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, entirely voluntary, they can opt out at any time, they can sign up at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Berniscony?
That was my one question. Second question is, is there any program like this that's happening in the city right now, and um, those, I don't, smart thermostats, um, do they, are they doing that on their own right now? 'Cause I feel like that's happening at my house.
Hey, so that is...
That and my husband's turning it up, but uh, yeah, I feel like that's already happening.
Um, so, the first question is, we do have a, a Power Partners program that's been in existence since 2007, and we recently just phased that out due to um, old technology, so we're moving to a new technology base for this new program. Secondly, in regards to your current thermostat, if it is a smart thermostat, this program will allow us to select an event and actually control that thermostat by a couple of degrees to help reduce that strain. You may be experiencing as a residential resident that PG&E is currently tapping into your thermostat as you are a PG&E customer as well, we will be removing them from electrical space.
They, PG&E would have, has the opportunity to impact my electric?
Yes, well, they shouldn't, but they do, yes, so, 'cause because PG&E already has a program, and the thermostat controls both gas and electric, um, until we override their electrical program, which we're glad to be doing now, um, they will no longer control your electrical space.
Okay, good, thank you so much.
Who keeps the data?
Um, well, uh, the data is kept by our third-party vendor, Energy Hub, um, with a lot of security involved in this, this process. Um, there's very little, and there's no customer communicate, information that's provided to the provider, it's merely a location-based, based by thermostat.
And does this help, help us uh, create eligibility for grant programs for conservation, then?
It certainly does allow us a lot of opportunities by having this program, and we were always seeking out grants in any way we can.
I don't even know where I came up with that question, but good question, huh? All right, I'll open it for public comment, unless, I'm sorry, unless there's other questions.
I just had one more. Explain that again, so what is PG&E, you say they have both gas and electric now, but what are they doing with our electric?
So, PG&E is doing the same thing that we would be doing. Um, as a utility provider, they don't um, distinguish Roseville residents from outside the area residents, so they control both services, as we do not currently um, take over the electric service.
But they can't control anything unless they got, receive permission from the resident?
You would have had to sign up for the PG&E program, and then they would be controlling your thermostat in their events.
Okay.
Uh, he, so, I don't even know how to form this question. Let, let's say there was an, an unexpected situation at the House, is there a way to override the system, you know? And so there's like a medical situation, and you didn't need the, the thermostat to go up, so you, there can be an override future, right?
Yes, individual customers have the ability to override and not participate in any, any thermostat control event. So, should they be in the program and say, today doesn't work for me for a number of reasons, they can override that and opt out.
It's still be in the program?
Yes.
Okay, all right, unless there are other questions, I'll open it for public comment. Expect the scouts to ask a question?
Yeah. Be talking to you or to...
Talking to me. Talking to me.
He talking to me?
I got you, okay.
Us.
Yeah, Energy Hub for the council and others, okay. What is, is there a cost for someone enrolling in the thermostat through Energy Hub thing? Because they are a third party, so there's gotta be something in there for them, so is there a cost? That's number one.
Is there a cost?
There is, and we expect in year one, uh, for the cost to be $110,000, over five years not to exceed $582,000.
But, uh, on a per customer basis?
Per cus, well, it is per customer, there's parts and pieces, there's also participation with the major thermostat providers such as EcoBee, Nest, Honeywell. So, there's participation costs and then an individual cost.
And, and how does that cost incur? Is it on a monthly basis on the bill? 'Cause I've been there, done that, I've been through...
Does that cost rolled into your bill?
No, that cost is not passed on to our, our residents, it's paid for out of public benefits funds, so it's a benefit to our community, so our residents do not pay this um, in terms of that perspective on their bill.
So, there are free, you know, there is free lunch.
There are no free lunches.
There's no free lunch, we just have to work on that.
And I, I have another, another question in regards to that, okay. Currently, and I don't know about, I, I'm assuming that people that are in Roseville receive two bills, meaning Roseville Electric and uh, PG&E, if you're on that, okay? How would that work in terms of Energy Hub being uh, the supplier when Roseville Electric is the supplier of our energy electric bills? Is that making sense to you?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, and let me, let me say, the asset manager at my house just tells me when we're like, in the, you know, top 10% of energy efficiency, but do we get two bills? Do we get...
You have a specific bill for the Roseville utilities, and then a separate bill for PG&E by itself.
All right.
Well, we currently get, I currently get, I currently get that, yeah.
Yeah, but it won't roll over into...
So, but, so, Energy Hub, will there be anything on a bill? Because like I say, I've been in programs like this before.
I'm getting a head shake, no.
Yeah. I haven't asked the question yet. Will there be anything on a bill that would be coming from Roseville Electric? Because that's what we're talking about, Roseville Electric. Will there be anything on that bill that comes out that's saying Energy Hub?
There are no charges on your bill. If you participate in the program, you will see that one-time signup um, incentive of $25 that we provide to the customer for participation, and then an annual $25 incentive, but there are no charges on your bill for Energy Hub.
Okay, and the reduction, how would we know what the reduction is? Because PG&E and, and Roseville Electric, they als, often send out, I think it's like every quarter or maybe every month or whatever, uh, calculation of your monthly, you know, what's going down, what's going up, whatever. Will that be, it's still, will that still be available so that you know what kind of range you're in when this thermostat, smart thermostat is doing its smart work? And I'm being facetious. Do you understand the question, council?
Yes, no, I understand the question, I think that was what I was referring to when we get our, we look at where we rank, but it would still be the same.
Yes, you'll continue to get that service, and on average, it's estimated that a customer that participates in multiple events a year, each event is equal to about one kilowatt, very, very small numbers. It's about quantity over individual numbers.
That, that really, maybe it wasn't my question, because I'm saying that in a sep, not in, not in relationship to the bill, but Roseville Electric, PG&E too, sends out a, a yearly, like swapping your month and saying, this is how, this is where you were in July and last year, and this is where you were, you're currently at in Ju, July or May or whatever month it is, so that you know when you, whether this smart thermostat is doing its job in keeping your, your uh, electric bill, your electric usage down as opposed to last year. So, is there a comparison?
So, on your utility bill, you do have a comparison of last year at this time versus this year at this time, which will continue to be there. Um, as a method of reducing your usage, um, the program itself is only called during an um, extreme usage event, so like high heat here in Roseville, so it wouldn't be a service that would continually reduce your usage month over month, it would only be in terms of duress on the grid.
Okay, and that just about concludes, I just wanted to know, how can I look back and see, you know, whether this smart thermostat is doing its smart job in keeping my costs down and, or...
It's not its goal.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, well, thank you for your questions.
Thank you, thank you.
We're smarter for it, and that was no pun intended. Any other public comment? Close public comment, council have any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, on item 10.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-218, approving an agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Energy Hub Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. May I please have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to ordinances and, um, roll, uh, so, 11.1, City of Roseville's FY 2425 Citywide Budget Position Allocation Schedule, Roseville Housing Authority Budget and Roseville Finance Authority Budget. Yeah, it was with us, or, we don't have Nancy tonight. Uh, we have our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Dennis Kaufman, and Scott Petten Gill.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, yes, with me tonight is Scott Petten Gill, our Assistant City, our Assistant Finance Director. Uh, Scott will be providing the presentation tonight on the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, which begins in 11 days on July 1st, and ends on June 30th of 2025, along with the recommended budgets for the Roseville Housing Authority and the Roseville Finance Authority. Uh, before he begins our presentation, I'd like to take a moment just to acknowledge and thank all of the city staff who have worked to develop this budget over the past six months, and bring it to you tonight for budget adoption. So with that, Scott, take it away.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. Tonight I'll be providing a condensed summary of our 25 citywide budget, the Roseville Housing Authority Budget, and the Roseville Finance Authority Budget, and then we'll conclude with the recommendation to formally adopt each of these budgets. So, I'll begin with an overview of our fiscal year 25 citywide budget. This year's process resulted from an extensive budget process that staff began working on last December. In February, the city council conducted the goals workshop, which set the budget's priority for fiscal year 25, followed by staff presentations on the budget development calendar. In March, we provided an update on the city's pension and OPEV liabilities, and we conducted the city managers' budget review meetings in April, and updated city council, city of financial policies. In May, the city council received a report and presentation from the Measure B Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, and staff presented the proposed capital improvement program, electric and environmental utilities budgets, and the updated user and regulatory fees. The proposed budget was released on May 17th, and then on May 28th, the city council held public meetings on the proposed budget. Also on the slide, we've provided an overview of the annual city budget cycle, highlighting that our budget process doesn't stop after tonight's adoption of the proposed budget, and it's really a continuous process that includes budget monitoring, reviews, and planning for the future. This year's budget process also focused on awareness and outreach. Our goal is to ensure that both the public and city staff were informed throughout the process. Firstly, we developed a newly condensed version of our budget in brief document, you could see a snippet of that document on the slide, and we also provided a couple copies up here. Additionally, we will continue to produce the more detailed budget in brief trifold that you see in the past, which will be released at the beginning of July. We also made the budget information available to the public and staff through various channels, which included posting detailed information on the city's website, sharing updates via social media platforms, and outreach to community employee groups. And lastly, on May 28th, we held the budget hearing, and at that hearing, the city manager and finance staff presented an overview of the proposed budget, and city departments also provided presentations giving a comprehensive view of the proposed budget. The proposed budget for this year focuses on maintaining current service levels, ensuring alignment with the city's mission and city council priorities, and maintaining fiscal responsibility. Some of the key highlights... Some of the key highlights that are included in the proposed budget include strengthening public safety by enhancing the social services unit and threat assessment unit to ensure a community's safety, as well as conducting a fire academy to maintain staffing levels in the fire department. The budget also enhances park maintenance by insourcing services to improve and upkeep of our parks at reduced costs and better, and provide better maintained recreational spaces for our community. Environment utility staff is increased to ensure compliance with state and federal mandates, and the budget also includes additional traffic operations staff to enhance traffic monitoring and improve traffic flow within our city. Also, we are allocating funds for various capital projects, including the construction of electric substations, parking facilities, park amenities, streetscape improvements, and roadway surfacing. We are paying down unfunded liabilities to ensure the fiscal health of our city. And lastly, the budget fully funds the general fund reserves, providing a solid fiscal foundation for our city. Moving on to citywide revenues, the proposed budget includes an estimate of $799 million, representing an increase from the previous year total of $794 million. Our enterprise funds stand out as the city's most significant revenue streams, and these funds, which include electric, environment utilities, and transit, make up the majority of our revenues, accounting for 55% or approximately $440 million of total citywide revenues. Falling as our second largest revenue source, the general funds representing about 28% of all revenues, and these funds support essential departments such as police, fire, parks, recreation, and libraries. And lastly, the remaining portion of revenues fall under the other funds category, and this category encompasses resources from various sources, such as special districts, development, golf fees. And while smaller, these revenues make up about 17% of all citywide revenues totaling approximately $136 million. Moving on to citywide expenditures, our budget totals $768 million, reflecting a decrease from the previous year's total of $784 million, and this decrease is primarily attributed to some significant investments in one-time capital requirements last year. Despite this decrease, the proportional share of each major spending category included in the budget remains similar to that of prior years. Salaries, wages, and benefits, followed by material service supplies, continue to make up a majority of our spending plan, and the largest spending category remains salary, wages, and benefits, accounting for 38% of our budget at $292 million. Material service supplies follow, making up 28% or $215 million of the total budget. A significant portion of the budget, 13% of our $100 million, is allocated for capital and non-capital projects. And additionally, 12% or $92 million will be allocated for electric power purchases. And lastly, the remaining 9% of the spending plan categories as other in this chart, encompass spending for debt service and transfers to other funds, and totals approximately $69 million. The fiscal year 25 budget includes funding for 1,388 positions, representing an increase of 20 positions compared to the previous year. The proposed budget includes 27 new positions, offset by the reduction of nine positions, resulting in a net increase of 18 new ongoing positions. The budget also includes two additional positions related to promotional reclassifications that will be eliminated after the hiring process is completed. Excluding these two promotional reclassifications, which are more temporary in nature, the city's ongoing position count is increasing by 18 positions or less than 1.5%. And lastly, the budget also allocates funding to reclassify two authorized positions. Human Resources was going to analyze these two requests and then present them to City Council for consideration at later date. On this next slide, we provide a closer look at the recommended position changes by department, and then the first column reflects the 27 new positions, and the second column shows the positions recommended for elimination. And the third column is the net change in ongoing positions, which totals 18 new ongoing positions or the less than 1.5% growth. The two columns in blue off to the right reflect reclassification position changes that I referenced earlier. Proposed budget also includes $90.1 million in capital project appropriations, with the majority of these projects in public works, Roseville Electric, Water Utility, Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. Some of the notable projects include utility infrastructure upgrades, tenant improvements, streetscape enhancements, park developments, roadway resurfacing, and public safety initiatives. Staff also incorporated the department's long-term capital planning into the five-year capital improvement program included in the budget book, with $432.6 million in capital spending anticipated over the next five years. So now I'll dig a little bit deeper into the general fund. On this next pie chart, it provides a breakdown of general fund revenues, which total $229 million. Bradley Burns measure, Bradley Burns Sales Tax, Measure B Sales Tax, and Property Tax revenues make up the majority of our general fund revenues at 77%, and the remaining 23% is made up of licenses, permits, the electric franchise fee, and charges for services, as well as some other taxes. On this next slide, we provide a summary of the general fund operating expenditures by department. Our total general fund operating expenditure budget amounts to $229 million. A significant portion of this budget, or approximately half, is allocated towards public safety services, underscoring that the budget is aligned with the city council's public safety goals. And within public safety, the Police Department accounts for 28% of the budget, followed by the Fire Department, which receives 22% of all allocated funds. Additionally, Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department receives 17% of the general fund, and the remaining portion of the budget is dedicated towards general government departments, along with the Development Services and Public Works Departments. And lastly, that other category encompasses items such as transfers to other funds and the CalPERS additional discretionary payment. Adoption of this city budget is accomplished by adopting the budget ordinance, and this year, staff is recommending three adjustments to that annual budget ordinance language, which are highlighted in blue. The first, the first section is 3.9, and this adjustment will allow staff to change project numbers and other project attributes in our financial system. In other words, making more technical or administrative type adjustments. If those changes don't increase the total project budget, they're inconsistent with city council intent of the approved project. And second, we are recommending an adjustment to Section 3.12, and this adjustment allows the city manager or designee to process necessary transfers up to $75,000 between funds to facilitate the closure of a fund when its purpose has expired. And finally, Section 3.17, staff is recommending changing the word reduce to adjust to provide the city manager authority to decrease or increase revenues and expenditure budgets for development projects where expenses are fully reimbursed by developers. And this change will provide a more efficient and accurate reporting of reimbursable development project activity for the city. So next, I'll move on to the Housing Authority's proposed budget for fiscal year 25. The Housing Authority's budget includes funding to administer the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which provides rental assistance for low-income disabled seniors and veterans in Roseville and Rockland. The program ensures housing and economic self-sufficiency for up to 838 households, and it uses approximately $11.2 million in federal funds into the local economy each year. The funding for the Housing Authority comes from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The Housing Authority budget includes about $9.9 million in federal HUD revenues to be sent on rental assistant programs. In terms of administrative revenues and expenditures, the budget includes about $1 million in funding from HUD and $30,000 in administrative fees from the City of Rockland and repayment agreements to support program administrative costs. This funding provides support for salaries, wages, and benefits totaling $1.1 million and other operating costs totaling $216,000. The variance between available administrative revenues and expenditures is $258,000, which will be covered by available fund balance. And lastly, I'll move on to the fiscal year 25 Roseville Finance Authority Budget. The Roseville Finance Authority is a separate legal entity established to provide financing for city capital improvements. The fiscal year 25 expense budget for the Roseville Finance Authority totals approximately $4.9 million. The budget includes $1.9 million for debt service payments for certificates of participation for the Corp Yard and 316 Vernon Street. The capital outlay portion of the budget totals $2.3 million to fund the Fairway Drive and Junction Boulevard arterial resurfacing project using savings from CFD debt refinancing. And lastly, the transfers out of the RFA Capital Projects Fund of approximately $697,000 consist of transfers to the Citywide Parks Fund for the repayment of a loan from the Fleet Replacement Fund, which partially funded the construction of Harrah Crab Park, and $59,000 to be transferred to four Community Facilities District and applied as levy credits. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll hand it back to Dennis to review our recommendations this evening.
Thanks, Scott. That was a lot of information about our proposed budgets. So this agenda item includes three recommendations for the City Council consideration. The first is adoption of the budget ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024, 2025 citywide budget, as well as the included new vehicle requests and the citywide position allocation schedule. The second is a resolution approving the Roseville Housing Authority budget for fiscal year 2425, and finally, a resolution approving the Roseville Finance Authority budget for fiscal year 2425. And with that, Scott and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions, council? Councilman Albert?
On the budget ordinance adjustments section, Section 3.17, we're gonna be, if we approve this, we're allowing the city manager to authorize an adjustment of revenue and expenditure budgets to match the actual amount of revenues received or expenditures incurred. I want to know how that will get reported to council.
So these are reimbursable development services projects where developers are doing a project, development services, in many cases will collect a deposit upfront, will perform their work and incur expenditures, and then developers may owe the city money or the city may provide a refund for dollars that are not spent. And these projects are accounted for in the general fund, in individual projects for each development project, and they get reported as part of the general fund results, both in our quarterly reports and then at the end of the year as part of our year-end budget report. But the key thing about these projects is the net impact to the general fund is zero because the expenses are entirely funded by the revenue from the development projects. And so they have no impact on the general fund budget.
So this is merely just a balancing of numbers on a form?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Do you go to that slide, and I, maybe Councilman Albert was referred to this? Yeah, how did you know that was the slide I was thinking of? So this is in our charter, right?
No, this is the part of the ordinance?
That's all I needed. I just needed to know. I just needed to know because I just wanted to make sure that none of this was required a charter amendment or anything like that. Okay. I just need to know. Okay. Any other questions before I open for a public comment? Open for public comment? I'll open it for a public comment. Public comment. Council, if the council has other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion. This is a momentous, always a momentous moment in the year. A lot of work to get us here.
With no further questions, Mr. Mayor, on item 11.1, the City Council will consider adopting ordinance number 6825, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 202425, adopting budget control policies, adopting an appropriations limit, and adopting the budget for successor agency of the Roseville Redevelopment Agency to be effective immediately as an urgency measure, and adopting Resolution Number 4-24, approving the annual budget for the Roseville Housing Authority for fiscal year 2425, and adopting the Resolution Number 2-24, adopting the annual budget for the Roseville Finance Authority for fiscal year 2425. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
Stand moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Thank you for your excellent work throughout the year, not just to you, but your entire staff. Next up, 11.2, Salary Schedule for City Council Appointed Positions and City Attorney Employment and Person, Personal Personnel Services Agreement.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director for the city. And recently, the City Council completed the performance evaluations for city manager Dominic Casey and our city attorney, Michelle Scheidenberger. And in accordance with government code, I'm here to present the recommended compensation increases to be transparent. As part of the performance evaluation process, the City Council did evaluate total compensation data from our labor market to be, to remain competitive. And as such, staff is recommending a 7% salary increase be applied to both the city attorney and city manager. In addition, a $20,000 one-time non-pensionable differential payment is recommended for the city manager toward the compensation goal of being paid at least 5% above his highest-paid subordinate as specified in his contract. It is also recommended that the city attorney's contract be extended for five years. In addition, it's recommended that council approve a 2.5% general wage increase that would be effective the first full pay period in 2025, along with the other general wage increases for the same amount with our management group. So overall, for fiscal year 2324, the costs of the compensation changes will be $22,656, which can be covered by available expenditure savings for this year. The total ongoing annual impact of $44,205 for the city attorney and $51,223 for the city manager's office will be, will be included in future budget year, or fiscal year budgets. So with that, staff recommends that City Council adopt an ordinance to approve the attached City Council Appointed Positions salary schedule, reflecting the 7% increase to be effective the June 15th, 2024, and adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a second amendment to the agreement between the City of Roseville and Michelle Scheidenberger, approve a one-time non-pensionable differential payment for the city manager of $20,000 to be paid in the June 15th to June 28th pay period in accordance with his employment and personal services agreement, and approve a 2.5% general wage increase effective the first full pay period in January at the same time this general wage increase is applied for management group. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, questions?
No questions.
No questions. Since I'll open it up for public comment? Close public comment and bring it back to the council for action. No comments?
A comment? I've been through a few of these now, and I think when we get together and we talk about our two employees, you're the two that we hire and manage directly. This was very, very positive. I know our comments to you personally and our comments among ourselves, we're just very thrilled with how you run our city, Mr. Casey, and how you protect us, Michelle, and how you guys have been working with culture and your teams and all the challenges. And it's a lot the public doesn't even see, but you guys are doing a really good job, and we were very impressed with you. And so I appreciate that even in your own, you both were very concerned about your own wages, making sure that they're reasonable, because we know you're cream of the crop, although we don't want that to go to your head at all, but you guys, we really don't want to lose you, and we do appreciate having you here. So I just wanted to say that in public, because I know we told you that privately, but we appreciate your service for our city.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, well, we'll take the motion then.
Thank you. On item 11.2, the City Council will consider adopting ordinance number 6831, amending ordinance number 6654, the SALLY Ordinance for City Council Appointed Positions, as amended by Appendix R, to be effective June 15th, 2024 as an urgency measure, and adopting Resolution Number 24-235, approving a second amendment to employment and personal service agreement between the City of Roseville and Michelle Scheidenberger, and authorizing the mayor to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
And then, hold on, there's two more parts of the motion.
Oh.
Do you have the CC?
I'm sorry, Michelle, I don't see the other part.
So the other one was approve the one-time non-pensionable differential payment?
With the addition to approve the one-time differential payment of $20,000.
And then they approve the 2.5% general wage increase effective the first full pay period in January 2025.
Thank you. Thank you. And also to approve the city attorney and city manager to receive 2.5% general wage increase that is scheduled for management employees effective the first full pay period in January 2025. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
Stand moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes, absolutely, yes. All right. That brings us to the second opportunity of the evening for public comment on non-agenda items. For an extra merit badge, Troop 11, no? No, no, nothing? Okay. All right, I'll ask the city manager if he has. All right, I'll ask the city manager if he has anything else to report on.
Mayor, I do have one thing, and just because this seems to have come up not only last year but this year with Juneteenth. And so as your city manager, is the, one of the most important things in our city, in our culture, is diversity and inclusion. And so I think it's important for the audience to know that we work collaboratively with our labor groups to identify all of our recognized holidays. And it was a collective decision made with the labor groups to identify two floating holidays that our staff, who are very, very diverse, celebrate many different holidays, that they could celebrate those holidays. And those two floating holidays do that. And we did have staff today take Juneteenth off in order to celebrate that, using that floating holiday. And I think it was just important to, I know we don't typically address public comment to avoid the Brown Act, but I really, I'm walking the line here, Michelle, I recognize, but I'm trying to keep it clean. It's just important. This is something, diversity inclusion is very important to us and our community and our organization, and we certainly do celebrate it. And so those two floating holidays were made in addition to, or in partnership with our labor groups to identify the importance of the celebration. And so I felt I should address that. So thank you, Mayor.
And at the risk of, let me just say, you know, I know our committee, our employee committee, and I've forgotten the name of it.
Diversity and inclusion.
I thought that was it. Annually participates in the Martin Luther King Walk in the community, as does our law enforcement, so thank you. City attorney?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Open for public comment?
No.
No, no, we already, we already did it. Okay. All right, I'm going to start with Councilwoman Rakucci. I'm going to surprise you.
Okay.
All right.
I'm ready.
You're ready.
Just about three things. One is, just before we came here to council, we had the opportunity of going to see awards, promotions, and new hires for our Roseville Police Department. And that was just really very nice. And it's, they were new sworn staff, professional staff, and had our volunteers. Also, they gave awards to individuals in life-saving awards, you know, people, how they helped with preventing DUIs and collecting back stolen vehicles, the recovery. And it was held at Roseville High School, and we have a lot, we have new, we have new officers and we have promoted officers, and just a really good group of people who are out there keeping us safe. And that was, that was really nice. And I should see the families because I think it was said that not only it's a good service, but it's, it's family, you know, and the families were there to support their officers. Also, I went to my, one of my meetings a couple weeks ago, and that's Flood Control and Water Conservation District. And we now have a new director for our, for our board, but it's also, he's hired for Public Works, and his name is Derek Gord, and he's actually from San Diego area and had a lot of experience with all the floods that they had there and doing containments at that time. So I got to meet him. Also, one of our action items is something that we do every couple of years, and then we're in negotiations for it, but it's, it's to maintain our creeks and in our areas. And so it might be for flood control, but it's also for fire, too. And they're all over in different parts of Placer County, and the ones that we approve were Miners Ravine, Linda Creek. I'm reading these because these are a lot of Roseville areas, close to Roseville, Strap Ravine to mention a few. So we had that. And the only other thing is tomorrow at 4:30, that's the starting of the Placer County Fair, so at the grounds, the fair will open up, and there'll be a lot of fun, exciting things for our community to enjoy. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Madonza?
Just one item of note, I have the pleasure of sitting on the Roseville Police Activities League as an appointed council liaison. And although we didn't have an official meeting, we did have our event planning committee meeting, and we do have some exciting upcoming events. One of most note is in October, I know it seems like it's far out, but it's quickly approaching. It's the Bacon and Brew right here on the, on the town square, and there'll be a few other ones, so stay tuned. ARPA is a great organization, and there will be some upcoming events that I know our community will want to be involved in. And you mentioned the fair, so I won't mention it again. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice, Councilman Albert?
On the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, WAPMA, the landfill board, we now officially have a new executive director, Scott Schultz. He started on Monday. We're excited to have him on board, and it's now an independent organization. It's broken away from being sort of county-controlled. We got to attend a whole bunch of events. Talk about diversity in events. So we had the Pakistani Festival out here at the Vernon Street Town Square, and it's a very culturally diverse event, and we had a lot of different people there, and it was a lot of fun. I know several of us go to that every year, and get to learn about the history and wonderful food and beverages and art and everything. And then that group held a Police Heroes Award event last week, and that was the first time they'd ever done that. And some of us went to that. It was, it was very well done, I think. They did a good job of honoring, and it was a pretty big deal event. And speaking of ARPA, I serve on that board also with Tracy, and I got to do a sit-in with the group. So they had all the kids out there, and they were moving around in different groups. And so I got to sit in with the teens, the older group, in like a half-hour session, and we just talked about leadership. And it was really eye-opening. These kids are kind of the future, and that program is so fantastic, and they're getting to know our police officers, and some of them come from some pretty tough backgrounds. And so I just am appreciative of the staff that work with them. And again, I knew I was talking to some future leaders there. Karen and I got to attend a Juneteenth event out at the county this weekend, and it was, there were a lot of people there, a lot of music and culture and food, and a whole bunch of different booths from county, cities, and talk about very diverse, and very much enjoyed that. We also got to welcome in Silver Springs Neighborhood Association to our Kona. They got voted in, or they formed themselves, and now they'll be officially voted in this week to the whole our Kona Board. And so that was a lot of fun, sitting in all the new leaders in the neighborhood there. And then we also get to sit down on a new community or a neighborhood watch program from the police department. Neighborhood groups, they've got an issue in their neighborhood, and so all the neighbors are getting together, making sure they got each other's phone numbers and going through the program, can have a sign put up, and just everybody kind of watch each other's back in that community. And again, just watching the community come together. And Bruce, I hope you talk about your dunking. I'll save that for you. And then, and then also, others may mention it too, but I just wanted to say, you know...
Anything left after your talk, so? Just dunking.
I think all of us attended a memorial event for Aldo Paneshi. And yeah, watching pretty much who's who in Placer County. Our, a whole bunch of our city staff were there, just about every elected in Placer County, part of Sacramento County. Sorry. It was moving to me because one man was so involved and gave so much of himself to our nonprofit organizations, worked with different electeds, really worked hard to try to make this just a wonderful community for us to all live in. And it was an honor to know him and to be there with you guys for his memorial. It's very touching. Sorry.
Vice Mayor Bernice Coney?
Well, I also share your sentiments about saying goodbye to our friend Aldo. Many of us on this dais and in this room were wise to seek his counsel, and we were both natives of Roseville, as I know Pauline is, and Aldo and I used to joke that neither of us got very far by staying in our hometown, but...
Geographically, didn't get very far.
Yeah, well, we would always just kind of have this self-deprecating that neither one of us, you know, went very far in life. But yeah, so I, I'm sure all of us are thinking of his family. I want to congratulate the appointees tonight to our commissions and encourage those that did not get the appointment to not give up. Case in point, there was a woman who we appointed tonight, who that was her second time applying. So we always need more people to step up and serve our community. And lastly, I want to share that this morning I attended a Placer County Transportation Planning Agency educational event at Sun City. They discussed the tax measure that will be on the ballot for Roseville Lincoln and Roseville residents. We had our Public Works Director there just to discuss the projects that would be happening in, in Roseville. And the staff at PCTPA talked about all of the projects that would be beneficial to residents should this sales tax pass to help alleviate congestion on major arteries. So I would just stay tuned for information on that. I don't know that it has a name yet, does it?
I don't know, but it's got a letter. It's got B.
Is it E? Is it B?
B.
Okay.
Like B there.
Okay, so we'll have to keep an eye out for Measure B, and that's all I have for this evening. Oh, I will say, I will not, usually we have two meetings a month, July we have one, and I'm sorry, I won't miss it, but I will be on a family vacation. So I'll see you back in August.
Gratitude. All right, I'll do this fast. At the Pakistani Day Celebration, you know, in my professional life, I'm involved in water, so it was really fascinating to learn the largest irrigation system is in Punjab, India with the Indus, Indus River, and to learn that Team Pakistan beat Pakistan in cricket. But as the, as the gentleman explained to me, we really just beat ourselves because there were Pakistani-Americans on the cricket team that beat Pakistan. A lot of software engineers and various tech and scientific folks. Yes, I was in the dunk tank, and yeah, that was, that was great at the St. John's Fiscal Community Fair. Transportation, after our last meeting, I had a SECOC Transportation Committee meeting the next day. Tomorrow's the SECOC Board of Directors meeting, talking about the blueprint 2025, which they do, which is taking land use, air quality, and transportation and charting the future. I appreciate the city's messaging that's going out right now about illegal fireworks. That's very good. Hank, you know, one of the really great pleasures is to represent the city in various capacities. And so earlier this week, I had an opportunity to sit at, sit in at Fox 40, and they have a program called Community Conversation, a little three to five minutes, which seemed like it was three to five seconds, represent the city, represent, and the first question right out of the box was, well, what can, what can other cities learn from what Roseville's doing because it's doing a pretty good job? The second was about retail crime and theft and what we're doing with that. And so if you go to Fox 40, you'll see, you'll see that. I got to visit with the Placer Association Realtors, really kind of talking about the same thing, our mission statement, our vision, our goals, our budget. Today, Kiwanis is celebrating their 75th anniversary, and in Vernon Town Square, they recognized 15 nonprofits with checks of $5,000 each. So a long list of names that you'll recognize, the Food Bank, Keaton Raphael, Tommy Apostolus, Kids First, I'm missing, but there were 15 of them. I spoke to the Placer Builders Council this morning. Let me go back to the Kiwanis because, you know, on the community conversation I talked about, they said, what makes Roseville different? And I said, it's the planning, right? Whether it's the land use planning or whether it's our strategic planning that we go through every year, and then a commitment to that planning. Today at Kiwanis, I said, this is the heart and the soul of the city, the nonprofits and organizations like Kiwanis. Tomorrow, I'll be at Leadership Roseville, and I'm sure I missed something in there, but the Fourth of July Parade, yeah, we'll have that on the Fourth of July. Is that same time? Same day every year, Fourth of July. So we'll miss you, Vice Mayor Bernice Coney, but can we just move the council meeting to where you are?
Well, no.
That's not a vacation.
Not a vacation, no.
I like the Brown Act.
Oh, if we properly noticed it, maybe it wouldn't, I don't know. Anyway, thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening, and we'll be adjourned till our July 17 meeting, right? July 17. Thank you, everybody.